We all stand up and after we do the roll call.
Thank you. Stackhouse, Everett, Larson, Vogel here. Mattingly.
Here.
Rollinger.
Present.
Schrader, Watson.
Here.
And Devoe.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum this evening with five members present.
Fantastic. Let us go to the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, as liberty and justice for all.
We need a, if everybody's had a chance to read them, approval of the minutes of the meeting two weeks ago. Anybody have any changes, concerns, corrections? Tom, you always do.
No?
Perhaps you'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of September 13th of 2012 without correction.
Second.
As written.
I have motion in the second. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. We have two items for public hearing. The first one for the CUP 12-03, for Light Ministries and New Church. Maybe you'd like to talk to us about that.
Yeah, thank you. The proposal tonight is to table this indefinitely. We haven't heard back from the applicant, haven't had any resubmittals of site plans and other information that they were requested for. I got an email today, just basically, I told them what we were doing and they were, they're okay with that. And so when they do get around to submitting it, we'll just establish a new public hearing schedule and do the public notice at that time. What we didn't want to do is keep coming to you guys and having to table this over and over and over. So that's, we're proposing that this just be tabled to a date uncertain.
Okay. Rather than just withdrawing it.
Yeah, we don't want, we don't feel that they need to withdraw it at this point. I mean, it's been a while, but it hasn't been to the point of asking them to withdraw it. Because I think they're still serious about it.
Questions? Are you in a position to share why the delay?
I don't truly know. I know this architect that they're using doesn't move real quickly, but beyond that, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. Looking for a motion to table to a time uncertain.
A move that to table for a time indefinite, the Light Ministries' conditional use permit and site plan.
Second.
Okay, I have them.
We have a second motion on the table.
Motion by Watson and second by Rollinger begin with Mr. Vogel.
All those in favor?
We'll do a roll call.
Roll call?
If that's okay.
I think we're all on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Vogel.
What do I say? Yes? Aye.
You? Mattingly?
Yes.
Rollinger?
Aye.
Watson?
Yes.
And Devoe?
Okay.
Thank you. Motion passes 5-0.
The second item, the Woodland Park Municipal Code Amendment, by Ducks Unlimited, not Chicken Men. Not really. And Scott's going to present that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the formal adoption, I guess, or recommendation for adoption of this ordinance that we've been working on for a while with several work sessions. And present you ordinance 1170 for your hopeful approval. It's based on these work sessions that we've received input on from a collection of other code, chicken code ordinances that we've reviewed over time and we've been able to get together and decide what was the most appropriate for our community. And so, since most of you guys know this, but maybe for Mr. Vogel's benefit, I'll just kind of walk through what the, what the ordinance really does so that you're aware, because you weren't able to attend all those phone work sessions. Basically, what it does is it adds a section in Chapter 6 of the code, which is the animal section of the code. And right now, it's all about dogs, but we're going to add chickens. And so if somebody were to be inquiring about animals or chickens and they went to the animal section, they would see something about domestic fowl that would actually refer them to the zoning section of the code. So that there's some cross-referencing there. And adding a definition of what domestic fowl is, and any fowl, including chicken, duck, goose, turkey, pigeon, or other fowl excluding roosters or cocks. And then on page 2 of the ordinance is the use table that establishes where these uses are allowed in the city. And it's an accessory use, the keeping of domestic fowl accessory to the, to a single family use. And the chicken coop is an accessory structure to the, to a single family. And those are both, be both permitted uses in the urban residential and the suburban residential. So basically, the only place you can have them are in single-family homes. Duplexes as well, I guess, because duplexes are permitted uses in those zone districts. They're not, they're not permitted uses?
It's checked off here, multi-family.
Okay. All right. Just to, just to clarify, that is only for single-family. It's not for duplex or triplex or multi-family. And one thing that we do need to add is, that's not in here and we discussed last time, is the PUD. If somebody comes in with a PUD, like a subdivision, say Stone Ridge, for example, and they were forward-thinking enough to want to allow that kind of use in their subdivision, they could propose that use be approved with the approval process.
Does a PC mean permitted conditionally?
Permitted conditionally.
Correct.
So as far as those tables are concerned, eliminate the P on MF, or MF, 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 and H. Leave agriculture alone and the three and the two that were under suburban residential, plus the PC. And what is C?
C is conditional.
On HC, HSC is what?
That's a conditional use, meaning that it'll have, it would require council approval.
What is HSC?
Heavy Service Commercial Light Industrial.
Okay.
And we did discuss agricultural, agriculture district as well last time, but talking with Sally, we feel that it's already covered within the definition of agriculture. So we would propose adding PC to PUD on number four and five on that use table so that somebody could propose that. Otherwise, if they're, got a PUD approved, like Stone Ridge, somebody wanted to do it now, it's not an allowed use, they'd have to come in for an amended PUD, which is not something that any individual homeowner would want to do.
Could you give us an example of a special event with chickens?
Special event?
On the second page, on the backside.
You're talking about number two?
Yeah.
It wouldn't be a special event with chickens.
The change on this matrix are adding number four and number five.
Okay. I thought, I was just trying to figure out, we're going to have a chicken roundup or something.
We gave you the whole section under the accessory, accessory uses and structures.
So the only addition is four and five?
Correct.
Okay. I was just trying to figure out what kind of.
And you want to add PC to the PUD?
On number four and five.
Column, that's a very far right. Okay.
So, Chapter 1833 would have a new section called Keeping of Domestic Fowl Standards. Would require a permit that we discussed last time because you're required to have a permit for a chicken coop. So we felt that if you're already coming in anyway, let's go ahead and track these things. And if people, neighbors call in, we can say, yeah, they've got a legal operation going on there. We did change the number of, of maximum number of fowl you can have on a property based on last week's, or the last session's discussion. So you can have a maximum of six of the age six months or older, and six of their offspring younger than six months old.
I don't quite understand that. I kind of have a birds and the bees question. If you don't have cocks, how can you have offspring of the six? Maybe I'm reading it wrong.
I think that's a really good point.
You could have six at the age of six months or older and six.
Okay.
So how are they going to have offspring?
So it wouldn't be offspring, it would just be six months or younger that you would buy, I guess, somewhere at a feed store.
Buy and bred and check.
Good, good point, though. It wouldn't be their offspring, but it'd be some other.
I would hope not, otherwise there's, there's a rooster running around.
Their offspring.
And six, and six younger than six months old. So we'll remove of their offspring.
Okay.
That's a good point.
Good, good captain.
One of the things that Norm brought out last time, for Dan's benefit, is that we tried to figure out, what's the size of a chicken under six months? Well, fryers are five. And originally, it was unlimited. So you could have 100 fryers in the backyard. That's not the spirit of what we were trying to do.
Right.
So that's why it's limited to six.
Number four, there's a requirement that the chicken coop be fenced, and the fenced area should not be larger than 120 square feet. Sanitary conditions, they have to keep them clean. You know, we're not going to go around measuring or recording if people clean up every seven days, but it's a, it's a tool, if it ever came to an enforcement step, that would be a good provision to be able to back, kind of fall back onto. But we're not going to keep track of, of it every seven days. No outdoor slaughtering of domestic fowl. And then B is all about chicken coops. Chicken coops are required and shall meet the following standards. May only be located in the backyard, may not be located in a primary structure, shell, size shall be limited to 120 square feet, and only one coop per lot is allowed. We did raise the maximum height of the coop to 10 feet so that they can do more creative, people could do more creative coops than, similar to the ones that we saw the other night, that got passed around by Norma. I think it was originally six feet. So I think 10 feet is a little more reasonable to give them a little more flexibility if they want to have a two kind of story coop. It's not, it's not, I mean, we allow sheds up, we don't have a height limit on sheds, do we? Oh, is it 20? So 20 feet on a, on a normal shed, so 10 feet seems to be pretty reasonable.
Let me just clarify, because I have saw this before, remember, we said that the chicken coop and the fence have got to be a total of 120, which it says in there, but they could make it elevated and build a chicken coop at 120 and have the, the area underneath it where they could roam. So that way, nothing is going to be bigger than 120, 10 by 12, period. Nothing will be, including the fenced area and the coop itself. That's the maximum, being only one per property. Do we need to talk about cubic feet? Or not? Well, if it can't be higher than 10 feet, the formula would work.
And most people are going to build a fairly small coop. I think that they tend to like to be in a more confined space. This was really to give the fenced area, the entire area, 120 square feet.
They're going to have to get this approved by you anyway. Says that in 5, 6, 7, and 8.
And, you know, it's good to, it's good to have a little extra area, I've learned, for the chicken to run around, because I think they're happier and they're probably healthier and they probably produce better tasting eggs.
Happy chickens.
What's that?
Got to have happy chickens.
Got to have happy chickens, yeah. Some people that think that the 120 square feet is, is a little on the small side, but that's, that's okay. We've already, we've already hashed that subject, I think. Materials of the coop shall be complementary to the primary structure. I think that'll be another thing that we can review when they come in for permits, so they don't stick out like a sore thumb. Shall be predator-proof with a solid top. Shall be set back a minimum of 15 feet from the side property line and a minimum of 25 feet from the rear. And a zoning development permit is required.
What if you don't have 25 feet?
From the back?
To the back.
Well, the way it's written right now, in A1, no variances from these standards will be permitted, so the way it's written, they wouldn't, maybe have luck.
Wouldn't be able to have a coop, right?
They wouldn't be able to have a coop.
Is there, is there a single-family dwelling in Woodland Park that has less than 25 feet to work with that you know of?
There may be a few, but even in the older section of Woodland Park where the lots are 150 feet long, they should be adequate to have a little bit of space behind the house for that.
Those are 50 by 150?
50 by 150.
So if you figure 15 feet in, it takes up 30 feet from the sides, you still have 20 feet to locate the coop from the sides. So that essentially is the ordinance. And if you guys approve it, it's going to go to City Council for consideration on November 1st and November 15. Are there any questions that I or the chicken expert can answer?
Folks have any questions? Or Scott?
I have a question. What defines the backyard? If you have a, for example, there are people that don't have, like in subdivisions, that don't have fences, and there, is it anything from the back corners of the house on back? Is that considered? Or is it from the side? Because if there were wing fences and they're 30 feet up on the side of a house on back, that's considered a backyard?
It's from the rear property line.
So rear property line to the back of the house? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that, that envelope you have to work with, yeah.
Right, okay.
Because it has to be in the backyard.
So that's the backyard?
Yep, yep.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anybody else? I have a question. Roman numeral two background, increasing demand for keeping of chickens, blah, 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 including a petition signed by approximately 70 people. Are all of the 70 residents of the city of Woodland Park?
No, I think, what do we figure, he says, 60% were in the city of Woodland Park.
So 40, 40 and change, yeah. And you've had a few phone calls?
We, we have, yeah. That's kind of what initiated this ordinance in the first place, was the, was the number of phone calls that we're getting and.
Thank you.
We didn't, staff didn't dream this one up.
You weren't out canvassing the neighborhood?
No.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Before the public hearing, have any more questions to Tom? Scott? Tom? And we shall open a public hearing on the municipal code. And at this time, I don't see anybody signed up. Norma, do you have any input?
No, not really, unless you have questions.
Anybody have any questions of Norma? She pretty much answered those at our last meeting. Noting that, we shall close the public hearing. And now it will go to you guys for any more discussion. And gals. I use that loosely, guys. If hearing, no questions, you had a question, I could see it coming. No? Nope? Then we need a motion in a second if we. Could I make a comment? I don't have a question. Sure. I do have several concerns. By the way, I commend staff on a great ordinance, the controlling permitting, the size, you know, et cetera, et cetera. It's, it's very, very well-written. And I guess I'd just like to, to raise a couple of concerns. Some of these you may have heard before, others may be new. I still think that, that, that we have a pretty serious enforcement issue here. For example, does the gentleman who spends 20 or 30 hours a week here, is he going to have the time, for example, to count chickens? How do you enforce the chickens or their age? How do you determine that fecal matter is, is cleaned up promptly, et cetera? And, and I know when I, I raised this question before, some other folks said, well, gee, you know, if there's a problem, neighbors will raise their hand and say, there's a problem with the chickens over here, et cetera, you know, and people are responsible. And I, and I guess I'll go back to the example that, that I used weeks ago. The recycle center at Walmart failed because not everybody's really responsible. And, and that's true in any community. Also, I guess I'm a little concerned that it appears that, that we have a very few number of people, citizens of this, of this, of this, of this city, who appear to be driving the agenda. And, and I realize that, certainly, you all and we have a responsibility to consider matters as they're, as they're brought to our attention. But frankly, I'm a little concerned that the 1% is driving this agenda. I think it's, it's a very, very small minority. The demographer, you know, who was here on Tuesday, called Woodland Park a bedroom community. And, you know, that was, that was her opinion, that was, that was her judgment. I have some trouble, even, even with this great ordinance, I have some trouble reconciling a bedroom community with chicken coops. And lastly, there is some exposure for avian diseases to be transmitted to humans. The exposure's small, admittedly, but, but it does exist. For example, fecal dust is a problem. That's all I have. Anybody else have any comments or questions? I appreciate what you say. Thank you. But we've got, nobody counts the dogs to see if they're over the limit. Nobody sees if the dog poops cleaned up. And I mean, is it one, I think I'd rather be ahead of the curve, because most of the other communities that you folks checked on, they already have this ordinance. And it's a lot easier to do it now than all of a sudden it gets really out of control and then how do you make people get rid of them? You know, I, I, as Norma said earlier, this isn't to save money. This is for people to raise a different grade of egg or whatever, that's going to cost them far more if they went out to the store. No question, no question. Doing that. But I think, yes, there's a lot of people driving that, that aren't the majority, but I think, if anything, it's spawned us to put something out so nothing does get out of hand. This is a darn good ordinance. All the other ones we read, it's all condensed, precise, it covers exactly what we wanted it to cover from our, from all of our discussion. But I appreciate your comments. Okay, thank you. Scott?
Tom, if I could just offer, just the experience of some of the planners I spoke to when I, when I did some canvassing about this, is that, at least with the city fountain planner, they were, they haven't had any coenforcement issues, and they've had it going for about a year and a half, two years, and they have about 20 of them, I think. And they were, they've been surprised at how, that they haven't gotten any calls or any issues with them yet, so. Doesn't mean we won't have some, but it's, it's kind of interesting to hear.
And they also shared with us the forms that they use, so when someone comes in to get their zoning development permit, they will be signing the conditions of approval. So their name is on that obligation to meet the expectations, or they'll lose their privilege of having their chickens in their coop. That seems to be working pretty well for them as also.
Yeah, that was, that was a reason she cited as a good thing of having a permit, because it kind of does keep the folks honest that are doing them, that there are some parameters, and that, you know, there are people, people are watching. I mean, we're not going to go out and monitor them, but I'm sure we'll hear from it from a neighbor like we do, and if somebody has too much rubbish, you know, or abandoned car, we hear quite, quite a bit of these things. So neighbors do report things to us. And that's when, when Rick would go, our new coenforcement officer, would go out and check it out.
Is he going to go up to 30 hours a week next year? Do you know yet? Or?
That, that is what staff has, the planning staff has proposed.
Next year's budget.
For next year's budget.
For 13, right.
Need to go through, get past the city manager's look, and then the recommendation to council. But yes, we hope to have 30 hours a week. And then also, on a side note, our city clerk, Cindy Morse, does training throughout the state, and she was, had a number of clerks at a training, and she asked them all, how many of you have codes for domestic fowl? And all but two of the communities raised their hands. So it's pretty common to have this type of allowance in the communities.
Okay.
So it's not just being driven by a very small person. It's pretty common.
Well, it is, it is in Woodland Park.
The actual request.
You know, you haven't had 1,000 people knocking on your door saying, I want to raise chickens.
No.
And that was my point. Any other questions, comments?
Just recall that, you know, the comments I made about the covenants, the research that I did, there's quite a few subdivisions that don't currently allow domestic fowl.
Right. There's new subdivisions coming to the community, and I'm sure the sum of our, are there any of our existing covenants prohibited?
Prohibited, most of them do.
Most of them prohibited. So any new developments, you're not going to, you're probably going to see that in the covenant restricting that. But not every subdivision is, has covenants or even has an HOA.
Right.
Do you know of any that exist today within the city limits? And if they do, are they then required to get a permit after we pass this?
So are there any?
Chicken coops within city limits? I believe there are.
Well, there's, well, there's.
We know of one.
Yeah.
And it is grandfathered, it's been in existence since the initiation of zoning in the 60s.
Wow, okay, interesting. I think it's a great idea to keep track of who, you know, with the permit, and I think it's well-written, so I'm really happy with how it turned out.
Where's Mr. Smith's chicken coop? Don't know?
Not Mr. Smith's.
Pardon?
It's Mr. Bartlett's chicken coop.
Eric Smith?
His friend has one.
He raised chickens.
He has a friend that has.
He built it.
That's right.
It's not his.
Yeah.
It's not a Woodland Park though?
There is one, yes.
Yes. So we have city council.
A new one.
He came and talked to us about it.
Yes, he did.
In one of our working sessions, right?
Yeah, yeah.
For the existing chicken coop, I understand they don't have to have a permit, but would you ask them to follow these rules?
We would.
You know, number, fecal matter, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
They don't have to apply? Ask them to come in and get a permit?
But, but they don't have to file for a permit?
Yeah, I think we should. I think, yeah, they're, they're not legal right now.
Oh, okay.
They're not grandfathered because, you know, because it wasn't allowed use and they started it up, as opposed to Bob Bartlett's, who started it up before there were any rules on any land use.
Okay. That's even better.
It's not an existing, legal, non-conforming, is the term.
Do I hear a motion? Second.
I'll motion the Woodland Park Municipal Code Amendment to consider an ordinance for amendments to Chapter 6 and 18 of the Woodland Park Municipal Code to establish requirements for the keeping of domestic fowl.
Second.
Would you want to add the permitted conditionally in the PUDs?
Oh, yeah.
As we discussed.
To include the permitted conditions for the PUD, right? And number four, keeping of domestic fowl in ordinance with Chapters 18 dot 3, 3, 1, 4, 5, and number five, chicken coop.
Remove the multi-family.
I misspoke on that one.
Okay.
Yeah, that.
It's for the PUD, right? Yes. Okay.
We have a second?
Second.
Ready for?
Ready for a vote?
Yes.
Mattingly?
Yes.
Rollinger?
No.
Watson?
Yes.
Devoe?
Yes.
And Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes four one. As Scott mentioned, this will move forward to the city council agenda in November on the first and then on the fifteenth for the public hearing.
I would suggest on the public hearing, it wouldn't be bad for us if you have the time to attend it, because council sometimes gets a little. It'll be, it'll be more public. It just will by the nature of council. And if there's any questions, would you, would you suggest that? It's kind of like how DDA will come sometimes.
Yeah, that's perfectly acceptable for a legislative-type case when you're making a proposal to change the zoning code. That would not be appropriate for a land use case.
Clause judicial wouldn't be appropriate.
Right.
Before we go on to our work session, Mr. Vogel, you're a new addition and we have the, the press out there. And maybe you just want to tell us a little bit about, about yourself and all the good stuff.
Sure. I'm not a long-term resident of Woodland Park, but I plan on being. Moved here, I guess, about two years ago and a little bit like that. And started building in the community in two thousand and seven. And we're, we own a construction company here and started it in Colorado Springs and migrated west. And had a teaching job, was running a building trades program, which ended up closing and continued building and, and here we are. So that's kind of the, the nuts and bolts of my story.
Family?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, two, two children, nine and twelve. Go to the Columbine and, and then the junior high.
Very good.
My wife is the president and CEO of our company, so she's been, she's a general contractor as well, so we, we're both GCs, so.
Excellent, excellent. I just thought we'd get, get a plug in the press and then maybe she'll take your picture and put it in paper for us. We, we never get the, the fare that the council does because to just, you can see how many people are here, but we do important things before it gets there. Well, work session time?
This will conclude our regular session of the planning commission and we have a work session now to discuss the ordinance on the public notices.
We, we're not adjourned, though. We adjourn at the end of the final.
Yeah. We just conclude the televised portion.
Okay. And we're gonna adjourn ourselves to this.